Good morning. Welcome to a special board session of the Marion County Board of Commissioners to fill the vacancy for Oregon House District 19. It's Wednesday, January 24th, 2018. It's nine o'clock. We are in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. We always begin our regular board sessions with a pledge of allegiance and we feel like there should be no difference today, so if everyone would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love doing that.
I want to thank our three candidates who are here, three nominees, and for the hard work that you've done to get here in the first place. Congratulate you to make it this far. We are operating, since I'm supposed to do a welcome and an overview of the process, and welcome everyone who is here today and watching on Facebook Live or on CCTV. We're operating under the auspices of the Secretary of State and there are very specific requirements for filling a legislative vacancy, which we have done. I was trying to count how many times we have done this. I got to like seven and eight, you know, and I think there's probably some ones I'm forgetting, so it's, we-
You probably forgot about me.
No, I did remember you. We chose Cameron. This is the third time we've actually filled House District 19 in the 16 years that I've been here. So, there's a very specific process and I want to thank our staff, particularly Lisa Trauer, Nick Barb Young, Jan Fritz, Jolene Kelly, for making sure that we're following the letter of the law as we move through this process. So what we will be doing today is we'll be taking opening statements. They'll be three minutes each. Then we have questions from the commissioners and each candidate will answer for two minutes, and Kristi is keeping time, by the way. And we'll rotate the orders, so each question, a different candidate will begin and end. And then we'll allow three minutes for closing statements. We'll take a break and then we'll deliberate and vote and hope to adjourn right around 11 o'clock. So I wanted to give an opportunity for my fellow commissioners to make the opening comments if they so choose, and Commissioner Brentano has already signaled that he wants to do that, so turn it over to him.
Yeah, now you build it up and it might not be so good. As you mentioned, we've done six to eight of these, and I've told this story before, but it's these events that I take most seriously, but I feel the most direct responsibility. You know, every decision we make as a commissioner represents, in a way, a third of the people of Marion County, but somehow this one, just, I know that I'm making decisions for individuals on their votes and kind of, and it matters for a long time in the future. I will say, the six or eight, or how many we've done, I've really been pleased with the people we put forward. Commissioner Cameron, don't get too high, I did leave you in that group, but-
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, really, I really think there's none that I have thought differently. I thought we always chose the right person, so let's get into this. I would, there was one thing for the record. All of our correspondence is in the record. However, I had one call, email, a voice message last night on my phone from Lois Anderson, Right to Life. She was supporting Denise, but I want to make that part of the record, too.
Right, and I did neglect, when I turned it over to you, to say we have a very thick packet of letters that have been sent either by email or mail to us to, in support of the candidates, and so those are all in the record. Jolene has compiled those for us and we actually have a list of folks that wrote. I think that, was the cutoff four o'clock yesterday? So we did receive a couple this morning, two this morning, and I don't know if those got in the packet or not, but didn't quite make the deadline, but we'll slip them in anyway. Mr. Cameron, anything that you would like to add? You've been through this process before.
Yeah, twice, and I really want to thank you for being here today and going through the process, and I'll probably say this again, but any time you enter into this process or any time into public service, whether that's a school board position or a city councillor, and I see councillor Nakey is sitting here today, 17 years on the Salem City Council, you know, it's just really a great step and it is a sacrifice to do this, to do what you're about to try to do. And I want to encourage you, whether you get appointed here or not today, that you don't walk away from this process and stop, that you would find a way to get plugged in and that you would stay encouraged and stay plugged in. It's just really, it's an interesting process to do this, and like Commissioner Brentano said, it is a big, it's a big weight, because we are doing something for 63,000 citizens that are in House District 19. At least that's what the last census was when we did redistricting, so it's probably 65,000 citizens that we are making a decision on their behalf today, and you are here as a great person to be a part of that process. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So it's 9:06, so we're going to move right into our opening statements from the nominees. You're seated alphabetically from my right, so Denise Bowles and Satya, not even going to try, I'm sorry, and Michael Hunter. So we're going to go in that order for the opening statements, and then for the first question, we'll go in that order again, and then from then on, we'll rotate in that direction. Does that make sense? All right. So, three minutes each for an opening statement, and Denise, we'll begin with you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to thank all of you for just your service to our community and the consideration and the wisdom that you're going to bring to this process. We are well-served and I appreciate how much you all do, and I've watched you do things for many years. I ironically am probably more nervous this time around than I was the first time around, and maybe it's, and I'm saying that because it's important that you guys understand the reason that I'm nervous is because I have, I think, a clearer picture of what I am committing to should you choose to select me today. And my brief service before did not require me to vote on the House floor or to do some things, but I think that my service to the community was strong, and if you ask community members, they would reflect that to you. I also took my relationships and my knowledge of this process and was able to really advocate for our community and make some changes to the state. I think I did probably more than I expected from myself and maybe other people. So I'm here today partially because of that experience and understanding the role that our representative has in this community and the ability to bring people together and have important conversations. And I am, I've stepped up again, again, kind of unexpectedly, and because we have a lot of serious issues here, and they're not going to be easily solved. And I think government has become increasingly distant, or at least it feels distant, from the community, from people that are living and working and sending their kids to school. So I have been in this district for nearly my entire life. I did leave, I went to school in Seattle, I lived all over the country and actually in parts of the world, so I've had those experiences, but they have really solidified to me how special this place is. And I am committing to you and to the rest of the people who are listening that regardless of your decision today, I will continue to serve and to work and to advocate for the things that are important and for the people that are important. So I really thank you for your time today and I hope, I look forward to answering more questions.
Thank you. And would you say your name for me so that everyone can hear it? And I didn't mean to be disrespectful earlier, so, and I've known you for a long time, so-
Oh, yes. Satya Chandragiri.
Chandragiri, okay.
My patients call me Dr. C., that's-
Dr. C., that, I can do that. All right, so Satya, if you would make your opening statement now.
Thank you, honorable commissioners. I consider this an opportunity, this opportunity to serve as a great honor and privilege. As a community physician and a psychiatrist, I've been in public service for 30 years, and 17 years I have served our Oregonians, all the way from eastern Oregon till here. The reason I want to consider this is because I want to be the voice of those I serve. For too long, their voice of suffering and cry has gone without anybody listening to them, or they have been silenced. I feel doing the same thing again and again is never going to get us anywhere different, and for too long, we have been running in circles. Today, Mental Health America survey found we are 51st in the nation in 2016 survey. We can't go any further down. This is probably a unique opportunity. You'll have a psychiatrist and a physician in this state legislature. There is nobody, I went through the qualification of all 60 representatives and 30 senators. I have worked in the trenches. I understand the ground reality. I'll be in a position to help steer us back in the right direction as I have done in the past. I don't think there's anybody else can do it. I decided to roll up my sleeves and join. I have extensive experience. Serving the veterans as a psychiatrist in Salem VA Clinic was probably my greatest inspiration. Last five years, I've been doing that. I've heard their story, their battle never ends. They continue to struggle. We have lost more to suicide than enemy bullet. I get, when I attend the funeral of those who committed suicide, I see the grieving, helpless faces, and often the family members are consoling me by saying, "You did your best." When I see the face of a pregnant woman whose husband just returned from Afghanistan after 17 head injuries, and this is the kid who got 3.8 in one of our high schools, I, the answer is very clear. When I go to see the 13-year-old kid who tried to hang herself, sitting in my Salem Hospital emergency room, for three days, all I could go and say was, "Sorry, my child. I don't have a bed for you. Please, one more day, you stay here." This is my work. I've dealt with mental illness, and this is our community. And I think there's more important reason now than ever as a nation. We have to remember, a house divided unto itself cannot stand. This is the time, there's an urgent need in the state legislature. We have somebody with a face like mine, a difficult sounding name like mine, and somebody who really embodies diversity. We need to walk the walk, not just talk. Between me and my wife, we have been married nine year, 25 years. We speak nine languages, lived in many countries. I will want to see that, America for us and our future generations. On 31st January, I'll be filing for the primary. I seek your confidence and vote to help me achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael.
Yes, I'm probably the least known person in here, but Michael Hunter. I've been in Oregon since 1976. I came from Montana, which is not considered a radical state, I guess, but I have a degree in chiminology. I've been a police officer, a detective in Montana, I've been to FBI Academy. I came to Oregon as a state parole and probation officer, so I've had a lot of interaction with government occupations. Parole officer, I've been three years here, I had the Warren Springs Reservation, and that was, I couldn't handle that, so I went into private business for the next 20 years. And then I basically retired in 2002 and became a licensed state insurance adjuster, investigator. I'm a very good detective, is what it amounts to. For the last four years, I've been up at the state Capitol as a registered citizen lobbyist, meaning I've never taken a penny for any of my efforts up there. And so I've helped draft bills, I've helped language in bills, I've been part of the Oregon citizen lobby. I know just how dysfunctional that state level is, and that's where the disconnect is, is at the state level. So my experience is quite extensive up there. I primarily believe that, and again, this is getting into one of your questions, that disconnect was what I investigated. Why are we having so many problems with the Republican prestige, if you would, in the state legislature? Those are the easy answer to find. And in my conclusion, I will tell you what I found and what I think I can do about it. But right now, we need to get Republican powers, I guess is the best phrase. I am tired of everybody saying Portland has too much influence in our lives around here. I speak just like he does for the rural Oregonians. Those people, when I came here in '76, we had a viable rural economics based on natural resources, and that's what my critique is, is natural resources and fisheries. And so that's what I've been lobbying for all the time up there. We can return to that type of economic basis again. I'm glad that the Ol' Abbott Valley has a solid economic thing, but rural Oregon also needs to make a living. I, program that I have, I need to be in the legislature to get initiated. Can it happen that I can fix everything overnight? Absolutely not. But I am motivated and I know how to do it, and I want to get the things started. So somebody has to take the first step, and I want to do that. That's all the time I need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move into our questions. As I mentioned earlier, there'll be two minutes for each response, and we'll rotate, we'll rotate commissioners asking the questions and we will rotate the order in which you answer the questions, so there'll be a lot of rotation going on here. So I get the first question, and Denise will start, will begin with you to answer the first question, and then we will go to Commissioner Cameron for the second question, Commissioner Brentano for the third. So my question is, we have a legislature that's controlled by the Democratic Party, both in the Senate and the House. We have Governor Kate Brown, who is also a member of the Democratic Party, and so you will be likely a member of the minority party when you are in the legislature. And we know that in order to get something done, you're going to need to work across the aisle with others. So the question is, how do you find the balance between your principles and compromise in order to work across the aisle? Denise, we'll begin with you.
Well, you're correct, it's no small task as a Republican in the legislature today. It is very close to a supermajority, and it's gotten increasingly, I think, divisive. To your question, I, one of the, one of the pieces about the legislature that I think the average citizen may not know is, there is quite a bit that is agreed upon. There's a lot of areas that Republicans and Democrats work well together to do things for them for Oregon. Unfortunately, and, you know, we do have some major, not unfortunately, the reality is we have some major principles that are different. So I would say relationships are key, finding areas that we can agree upon, but when it comes to principles, I think it is important as a legislator that you do go in with a really strong set of what do you believe, what represents your community, and, you know, give every effort to try to find common ground, but there will definitely be times where common ground is not found, and it's important to be a strong vocal opposition to make sure that all opinions are represented and reflected in the process. So, you know, there's a place for loyal opposition, and I think it just takes some wisdom to figure out, you know, where you're going to die on the hill. I'm not going to die on every hill, but I have no opposition to dying on the right hill.
Thank you. Satya?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. You know, in my track record in the last 17 years, I have consistently maintained there are certain areas I'm not going to compromise, because as a physician, I took that oath of being a physician way before I took any other oath, and I can continue to maintain that. Am I going to disown some, my principle, there's no way, there's no way I'm going to compromise. At the end of the day, I'm still a physician. So there are a couple of areas I'm not going to budge, as I have demonstrated in eastern Oregon. I had to network with 21 counties in eastern Oregon. I had to find, I was totally a new kid in the block, to make, find areas where I worked with them, and they are one of the best friends I have in eastern Oregon. So I have seen what we can do, maintain the conservative principles, pro-life, pro-family principles. I'm not going to budge on womb-to-tomb care for my patients. That's what I believe in. That's what I believed even before I came to this country. Why should I change that? I'm not going to budge on wasting resources or fiscal responsibility. I would always ask, is this a child first, family first, is guiding principle before I vote on it? Now, are there areas I may have to compromise? Yes, of course, there's no free lunch. I understand that. Certain areas, we may be taxed, and we have a supermajority to deal with. Now, if that is the case, I'll probably ask, why are we continuing some other program? Is it really adding value to our investment? Is there a return on investment in the program we are supporting? There are a lot of programs that do not have to continue because they have had its natural course, or they failed to produce the result for which it was initially designed. Isn't that what we do in our own homes? When we have a shortage of revenue, we don't throw our kids out in the street, we take care of them, yet we buckle up in some other areas. We'll probably eat bread and milk if necessary. And that's the guiding principle that allowed me to triple the productivity in eastern Oregon Blue Mountain Recovery Center, or in Salem Hospital, or create one of the finest community mental health programs in the state of, in the county, in Hani County, where we have between five to seven hospitalizations per year, using the, what limited resources we have. So that's an example of my track record, and that's exactly how I'll be operating in this. When elephants dance, we all get trampled, and I want to remember that. So I'm not going to get into that, which will compromise my basic values.
Speak up, because I'm not looking at you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Michael.
This first question is exactly the reason I'm sitting in this seat. We have been controlled and dominated by Democrats that actually have just run this state to where I no longer recognize it as the same state I moved to here 40 years ago. What we are, and this question is the same thing, we're using a defeatist attitude as our Republicans. We're a minority, we, woe is me, we can't do anything like that. Nobody seems to have a plan to try to correct that injustice. I do. We can, and legally, not overnight, we can have one senator per county. They're a naysayer, so it can't be done. They're really wrong. We have an invitation from the federal government to address Reynolds versus Simm, 1964, which is the problem we have in this state. We should not have a demographic-controlled senate. That's against our own constitution, Section 4, Article 4. This particular thing can be changed, and we could have a senate that is actually representative of our red 30 counties. We are a red state geographically. I know how to change that. I'm the only one I've heard that even wants to challenge our woe is me. We need to get somebody in there that will start the ball rolling and get this thing corrected. I know how to do that. Multnomah County basically has nine of our 30 senators. We have 14 counties in eastern Oregon that only have two. We have a chance to pick up 12 Republican senators. I can't believe anybody would want something different. We can actually control the senate if we do it right. The route is there. We have an invitation to do it. I, I want to be the person that starts that. I have a plan to change things. I'm not happy with being in the same rut and just continuing down the same road when we're really not doing anything productive. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, yeah, so Kristi's going to do an oral thing, too, because obviously I'm not looking down in that direction and didn't see that the card had gone up, so I apologize for that.
So we're on to-
All right, Commissioner Cameron, you are there for the question number two.
Did I get to go next? All right, great. So, and I believe the first person, Dr. C., you're going to be the first person to answer the question, and what I would like to ask is, what organizations, neighborhood associations, other large constituency groups in House District 19 have you reached out to? If you can, and also talk about maybe at least three leaders or other organizations that are actively supporting your nomination. So there's two questions. I cheat.
We know.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have, as soon as I decided and I became a nominee, I reached out to a lot of organizations, a lot of my medical colleagues, people who are from India-US Friendship Association, Oregon Medical Association, Oregon Psychiatric Association. I reached out to the sheriff of Hani County and county commissioners, and a host of people have shown consistently that they're willing to support. A lot of mental health organizations, mental health patients and their advocate groups, veterans and their families, and a lot of them have written letters of support to you and you have it in your packet. Because my group, my whole focus was, even registered Democrats have written supporting my candidacy, because they find that this is not a partisan issue. The suffering of our patient is not a red or a blue brain. Everybody suffers the same way, whether in the midst of a suicidal crisis or psychosis or an opiate crisis that kills our children. It is an equal opportunity killer. There is really no health without mental health. We have those elderly with dementia and the brain injuries who are going to really sink our healthcare system, and there seems to be no direction in that. There is no planning going on for that. We're still kind of squabbling over little day-to-day things. So there's, I had absolutely no one turned me down. So you probably have a host of organizations, individuals who have written letters from throughout the state of Oregon. Three names you want? Reached out to Dr. Bud Beers, who was a gubernatorial candidate from our party. Reached out to attorney Harris Matzalato, who represents the patients in psychiatric security review board. Reached out to Dave Wardo, the sheriff in eastern Oregon. Reached out to so many people. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't have time to read out all the lists of people, but I gave you some.
And you all have a copy of the question in front of you, right? Or not? Okay, good. Just want to make sure that, so I'm looking for, in local, House District 19, neighborhood associations, large organizations, et cetera, that you've reached out to. Michael.
Okay, sorry. All right. I recently attended the Mill Creek Housing Association meeting and stuff. They were quite well-represented. Denise was there also and stuff, so we spoke with those individuals, introduced ourselves. I also have been meeting with the Almsville City Police. I believe you actually have a letter in support that you received from him. The Turner City Police, Almsville City Administration. I have been working with some state corrections officers. Because of my law enforcement background, I'm a strong public safety advocate, so these groups know and recognize that I could possibly really be beneficial to them. I also have members working from the Capital City Republicans Women, and I have people involved with the form of the Oregon Republican Women's Forum that are all assisting me in this effort. I just recently attended the speech for, or from Senator Huckabee's forum on the pro-life, which I'm a strong supporter of. So I've had a lot of contact with areas primarily in the outlying areas of HD19. Thank you.
And Denise.
Thank you for the question. I've spent significant time over the last several weeks and months going to a variety of meetings within this community. I was at the Morningside Neighborhood Association, the Southeast Mill Creek Neighborhood Association, Almsville City Council meeting, the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association, which was quite fun, and I understand you hear from them often. Let's see, I had a meeting with Dan Peterson at the Turner Elementary School, you know, to name a few. I'm going to Turner City Council tomorrow night, and we'll continue. I think it's a very, very important job for the state representative and I, to make those connections with individuals and community members and let them know who you are, so that they know when there's a problem, they know who to call. I think they should, the state representative should be very accessible to the community. That's their job. It's been a blast, quite honestly. It's probably been my favorite part. People that individually support me, so here are three community leaders. All the outgoing Representative Jody Hack is supporting me. Let's see here, Stuart Olson, Olson Family Farms is supporting me. Sam Skilern of Salem Leadership Foundation is supporting me. I have Brad Nakey here supporting me. I have others, but I will leave it at three, or four, I guess, now. Sorry.
Mr. Brentano, your question. Start with Michael.
All right. So what is the biggest challenge facing the residents of House District 19 today? I actually attended the Almsville City Council meeting, the Turner City Council meeting, and Salem City Council meetings, and I actually wanted to sit there to find out what the issues they were facing. And all three of them actually addressed, the first one was affordable housing. Everybody had that on their agenda. City of Salem was really concerned about homelessness, but that didn't affect much on Turner or Almsville. But listening to those individuals, they're so diversified in what they have to try to appease from so many trees to whatever narrow streets and stuff, it was kind of, I would not want their job. I think working in the state is probably actually easier mentally than working in the city council. So I admire those people for their effort in there. The number one thing I see was the public safety and housing. That came across on every issue in every town.
Denise?
So I'm next. Well, one of the major themes of the-
Um, well, one of the major themes of the neighborhood associations that I attended and including the city hall, um, meetings had to do with public safety on a variety of capacities. There's, and it is, Michael indicated, it bleeds into homelessness, it bleeds into mental health issues. I mean, it's hard to, to completely separate one issue. I, uh, the other thing that came was very clear, Onsvale's having a, quite a discussion about their water bill and the twelve dollar a month fee that's being assessed. And it really brought home to me how much, when government continues to grow their budget and pass that on, and, and this is not a statement on Onsvale because there's some really good conversations on both, both sides of that. It just was a broader perspective of the cost of living in our, in our, in our state and are we getting a good return on, on investment? And these individuals were fighting tooth and nail about the twelve dollars a month. It was a very significant, um, assessment. And there may be some very good reasons for it, and there are. But, uh, as a legislative leader, it really reminded me that every vote we take that on, on budget issues needs to have that memory of who's paying for this and the individual families that are living in my community and are we getting a good return on investment? So I think those are, those are the things that, um, have really come home to me over these last several weeks within, um, House District Nineteen.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of issues that our House District Nineteen faces, in addition to what has already been mentioned about house, housing cost, homelessness or near homelessness. I think mental health care and access to care is a huge problem which really is like, it's a complex hydra with many tentacles which enters everything. There's an interface with law enforcement. The challenges of access to care. We have the biggest emergency room in this, in the country in I-5 corridor, all the way from Canada to Mexico. We don't have to be proud of that. That really means that rest of the system is failing. So that's an important area. The second important thing is, is we're going to have, we don't have enough decent paying jobs because that's really going to impact. We are not able to retain businesses in our, there's a huge challenge with access to transportation. Veterans and their family, those with mental illness and those who enter the cycle of what we call transinstitutionalization, going in between jail and falling between the crack is a huge thing. It's killing us. It's sinking the dollars. We are not able to address that issue. I-5, as we all know, is a huge sex trafficking corridor. Children are escaping abuse. There's a huge domestic violence problem. There's a lot of hunger in our community and a lot of children are coming to school hungry. Our educational system, we seem to be satisfied with three R's, reading, writing, arithmetic. That, I thought, was the basic definition of literacy. I'm not satisfied with that. I think we need to really start aiming high so that we can compete at a global level and that's sadly missing. And the global economy is not going to be based on reading, writing, arithmetic, or forty, forty, twenty. We are not going to be able to compete with them. So there's a lot of young people disillusioned and not knowing which direction to go towards a career and that's going to be a big challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. I get the next question, number four. So when I was in the state, uh, as a state representative, I used to say that there are kind of three major buckets that my time went into. One was doing the policy work of the legislature, being on committees and kind of doing what I was assigned. The second was trying to push my own priorities, my own bills. And the third was constituent work. And during the interim, constituent work really was probably about ninety, ninety-five percent of what I did as a state representative. So this question really focuses on that last bucket. Tell us about a time when you successfully resolved a citizen's problem or issue with a government organization, nonprofit or other organization. And we'll start with Denise.
Well, I'm going to share a story that probably includes all three of those buckets. Um, and when I was appointed prior to this time, I had an individual and her daughter come into my office who had a pretty serious situation with regards to video voyeurism. And it was very emotional for them. It was a, there was a, um, case that was before actually here in Marion County Courts and it was fairly fresh. And we sat down and talked through and I was able to identify some of the problems. And the issue that happened was that the, um, pretty extreme voyeurism in home, in their home bathrooms, personal private areas, it was a misdemeanor which had less than a six-month, um, jail time. And they were just horrified as well as others. And it turned out that there were other situations throughout the state of Oregon during my, my term, um, in House District Nineteen. Anyway, long story short, we sat down, we looked at the issue. I went and used my relationships within the building in order to extend, extend this into a felony. Um, not only were, was I able to successfully work with these, um, citizens to change a law that had quite frankly not kept up with the, um, with technology, is I worked with the Marion County DA's office. They were extraordinarily helpful to make sure that the law that was written by legislative council actually was be, able to be used to prosecute. Because sometimes in the legislature, we, they tend to do things that don't, that aren't, that aren't effective. I wasn't interested in passing a law just to make myself feel good. I wanted to do something that we could make a change. So it was quite a broad, um, citizen group, was not paid to do it. I ended up following it after I left the legislature and we got that signed into law by, um, Governor Brown. So, you know, that was one of the most satisfying moments of my life to actually make a difference in, in this community and in the safety for our kids and our, our family members.
Thank you. Sachin?
Yeah, the, one example that really comes to my mind, I was, uh, the superintendent at the state hospital in Pendleton. This is when nine eleven happened. Federal government overnight took a decision to close town, close the program which was managed by USDA to take care of health professional shortage areas. What does this mean? Twelve doctors in the entire eastern Oregon, east of Cascade, would not have been, we wouldn't have been able to replace them. That include primary care, OB-GYN, pediatrics, mental health. Immediately I researched and said, this is not really a right thing for our community and this identified an alternative program. I contacted Salem using my contacts and we, I also was a board member of American Association of Community Psychiatry, contacted APA and contacted other congressmen. And we researched an alternative program called Conrad Twenty, which eventually President Bush went on to sign as Conrad Thirty. It changed the rules and because of which today Salem can have physicians, including specialists like neurology, nephrology, primary care and so many other things, including our state hospitals. So what little decision that I took in Pendleton is helping our District Nineteen and it has long co, i, impact in our state health professional shortage. So because of which, uh, we were able to change and within a short time, Governor Kolongos, uh, Governor Kitzauer then signed this into a law and today we don't have a health professional shortage situation in Salem and other places. Otherwise, our whole s, s, city would have been without several very critical specialists in medical field. And I really thank President Bush, his vision during a very critical time in our country where he had to take a very tough stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael.
Well, I'm currently a member of the Oregon State Department of State Land's Rules Advisory Committee and this is working on permitting in stream activities and stuff. Uh, that's part of what I do is natural resource information for the legislatures and this committee is actually one of them that's very perfunctional in, in actually directing how in-stream activities work. I mentioned that I had been in private business for twenty years. I ran a sport charter boat fishing out of Newport. I have over seventeen thousand hours operating in the ocean. So I have killed thousands of fish. I'm very, very knowledgeable about salmon and salmon history, very knowledgeable about natural resources. And interesting enough, we had a meeting the other day and your mayor of Salem pulled me aside and asked me specifically what I thought of this new project going up at Detroit Dam because of my knowledge of fisheries and the water resources. I believe he respected the fact that I am quite knowledgeable about that factor. So working with the county, with the state DSL and having the sen, the city mayor actually ask me about information, I think is credible.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron, question five.
So, uh, working to improve Marion County's economy is a, is one of our top priorities and how would you use your appointment to HD Nineteen to help us in this effort? Doctor, you want to go first?
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I would really take a four-pronged approach. First, we have to simplify and reduce the business burden so that we not only attract but retain businesses, whether it's a small business, medium-sized business. We are only focusing on very large corporations like Intel and Nike. That's not enough. The second important thing is we need to really revamp and have a solid direction in our educational system, starting from elementary education onwards. We cannot be satisfied with three R's. We need to start thinking in terms of what are the cutting-edge global needs and how to make our kids competitive. In some countries, computer sciences start from second grade onwards. We are still talking about three R's. So that's not important. The future, we're going to need like one point three million IT jobs. Only a third of it can be supported by our current college. So we're going to have a real critical need for that. So specialized sales, computer and math and data analytics and infrastructure development. The third important thing is we need to work with Bureau of Labor and Industry. They're putting undue burden and we can't, in, in real private sector, we can't wait years to have a project sanctioned. And we really need to partner with university, private-public partnership. I have seen it happen. I started a private-public partnership and we are having very successful, very good outcome in what work we are doing. So we really had to start thinking in those lines. We really need a, entire template has to be changed. If we don't know where we are going, we will never reach there. And I don't see currently, that is the direction. We are, seem to be satisfied with just patchwork and that is not the way I have seen. I've lived and worked in countries, I've lived and seen different cities and different countries where people are talking about industrial scale. My daughter is teaching in Shanghai, English, and she's teaching English to children who don't speak English at home. Thank you.
Primarily my focus that, uh, Marion County, of course, has been, I live in Onsvale and stuff, so all of the neighbors and stuff I talk about, we all are right in the rural, the agricultural area and stuff like that. I believe that basically right around the Salem area, we do have quite a thriving tech and industrial type thing, the new Amazon and all of that stuff. That's admirable. But we're still ignoring Onsvale and Turner. They have small little projects. And talking with the Onsvale City Administrator, his basic thing was that we would like to be able to comply with stuff, but our urban boundaries are all restricted by regulations directed at the city of Portland and large areas. So they're floundering. We have too much regulation for the areas just outside the city limits here and that needs to be addressed. The little town cannot match what Portland's requirements are. They need to be looked at separately. Those individuals have a voice and that needs to be heard. I believe in reasonable regulations and reasonable permitting. And I think we have excess regulations and I think we have obstacles in our permitting processes. Those need to be addressed.
How would you do that? We have a little time.
No, I don't think we want to do that.
Okay, all right. Well, he had time on his question. I was, I was, all right.
Um, let's see here. I got distracted by you, Commissioner Cameron.
The question is, how would you...
Okay, improve, improve Marion County's economy is a board priority, yeah.
How would you work?
Well, I expect to have strong partnerships with Marion County and I think my colleagues up here have touched on a lot of important issues. Government, increased government regulation, permitting problems. I mean, government does a lot of things to get in the way of business and entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial spirit. And, um, and I think that one of the major roles of, of government is to get out of the way of the entrepreneurial spirit. And I'll just give an example. There's a rulemaking, I won't specify what it was, uh, in my role at Salem Hospital, that was going to require an extra FTE just to, to comply with the paperwork for the rules. And this is an organization of four thousand plus people and they were very upset over this, um, entity, this situation. And there's hundreds of examples of this throughout the state, probably thousands. To absorb that, you get into a small business, which is really the bread and butter of our, of our state. You know, you can't add FTE in order to comply to the myriad of regulations and rules that are coming out of the state government. So I want to look at that really clearly because that, we've, we've got to get out of the way of people being able to, um, build businesses and, and make a living and provide jobs in our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Brentano, you get question six.
I probably chose this, but it seems kind of mean, but let's just go ahead. Have you ever publicly said or written something that you regret? Briefly describe the situation and the impact it had. And Michael?
Well, that's an interesting question because the answer is I don't believe I've ever said anything that I regret. But I'll point out a couple of things that happened, I guess. I've been very firm on what I believe to correct the issue in the state legislature and that is this one senator per county. And two months ago at the Marion County Republican meeting on the third Thursday thing, I made that comment and an individual you guys all know by, um, Kevin. Come on, he's an ex-legislator, I can't even think of his name right now.
We know.
Yes, I do and I, I'm just, I went brain-dead for a second here.
Kevin Mannix, so be it.
Okay, you know who, anyway. He made the statement right in front of everybody that it can't be done. And I'm going to mention that I have connections, I'm involved with two agencies at the federal level, which is part of the Department of Defense. And this is doing a Strategic and Critical Minerals Act where we become self-sufficient on our critical minerals and China will no longer have the purse strings and control our defense. But anyway, I asked him if he was up to speed on the federal level stuff. And he just simply at that time said, we just need to discuss it. Now, three days ago at the other central committee meeting, he sat behind me and I asked him, I said, have you figured out what I'm talking about? And this is kind of a concession because he said, yes, I know now about Hillsdale College and Judge Gorsuch and I see where you're coming from. So he actually admitted that when I first spoke up, I had more knowledge than he did. That's probably nothing I've been regretting because I do know exactly the route that could be taken. I, I really, I've taken a firm stance on one oh one. I took a firm stance on any kind of sales tax. I just don't have any regrets of what my position is. I think I'm a very solid Republican.
Denise?
Um, I took this a little bit differently. Um, and I've spent probably most of my life disciplining myself to pause before I speak. Uh, when I was younger, I was much more imply, uh, able to really articulate my emotions and thought in a way that, uh, was hurtful. And, uh, at least it's come back. And it's, it's something that I don't want to be known for. And so with regards to, you know, the social media and everything, I'm very careful about what I say publicly. And, um, and I don't have any, nothing came to mind currently of what I've regretted because, uh, I, you know, I constantly am thinking, how is this going to impact the receiver? And so, um, you know, I know going into, uh, the legislative process, it's a, it's a whole new game and there will be times, but I think, um, approaching it very thoughtfully and considerately and trying not to respond in the emotion of the moment is how I've pretty much defined over the last ten years, maybe fifteen years of my life. And I will take that sort of discipline in the legislature to be, you know, to make sure, because words matter and they're important. And I want to make sure that, uh, my message doesn't get diluted by my method.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, when I started working in Oregon State Hospital, I was a fierce advocate for my patients. These are the patients who were on Psychiatric Security Review Board. After a hearing where I really advocated, I wanted the patient discharged because the patient has been doing well. It didn't happen the way I wanted. I was very angry with the director of the Psychiatric Security Review Board. She was a good friend of mine. I went and later, was in a very forceful way, probably erased my boy, told her, what happened? What's this going on? Why aren't you releasing them? That's when she looked at me and said, look, I'm a lawyer. I don't decide the standard of care. You all have to come up with the standard of care and prove that you made it. That's when I realized, oh my God, we as an institution have never decided the standard of care and when to release. You can't ask a lawyer to decide when, how to treat a heart attack. Why should it be different? And we are spending twenty-two thousand dollars per person, per month and holding them for years. You're spending nearly forty-six percent of our biennial budget for two percent of patients. That really set me thinking. My God, our state needs a sequential intercept model and... My God, our state needs a sequential intercept model and alternative ways, just like we have prison diversion program. We need something. We are squandering away entire resources. And 98% of the people in the community I have to live with, whatever little dollars is left. You're spending 1.6% of the budget for addiction prevention. It's no wonder we are producing the result for which we have designed our system. It's not going to get us anywhere. If I have a square-shaped cookie cutter, all cookies have to be square-shaped. How in the world did I expect something different to come out? It's not anybody's fault. It is a design template. People are very hardworking. That really was a humbling experience for me. After that, whenever I have written anything, I read it. I don't send it by email. I wait three days, meditate on it, only then it is released. I carefully watch my words. Thank you.
Thank you. Question seven is my question. We'll start with Denise on this question. So I'm going to, I've elaborated in every question. I'm not going to change with this one. So, right. So as we mentioned at the outset, we as a board have appointed a number of state representatives when there have been vacancies. I'm just starting my 16th year, and like I said, I counted eight and there's probably more. And I have noticed that those state representatives are very responsive to Marion County. In fact, I have jokingly said that I just think we should choose all the state representatives as a board of commissioners because they are so much, so responsive to what our desires are. So there's a lot of connection between the county and the state. We get a lot of our dollars for transportation, for public safety, for health care from the state, and we are on-the-ground implementers of what happens for the constituents that we share in House District 19. So with that context, if appointed, how will you approach working with Marion County to help us as commissioners help your constituents? Denise, we'll start with you.
Well, I feel like I do already work with you in my current role and I have worked with the county throughout years of my life. I would, it's a very important partnership. Marion County government is the government that really, I think, affects the day-to-day life of our residents here. And, you know, you know clearly everything that you're doing. So I currently serve on the Marion County Budget Committee, which I plan on continuing to serve on. That gives me a really good understanding of some of the needs and things. And as I'm sitting, making decisions on bills and having conversations, there's a prism that goes through, you know? How does my county feel about this? Or if I have a question, I know Jason Myers, I can call our sheriff and ask him, how's this going to affect you? And those types of relationships, I feel like I already have those, and they'll just strengthen. I think it's important that we have a two-way conversation so that I understand if something comes up that I didn't think of. You know, I know the three of you are not hesitant or shy in sharing your opinions on things, and I look forward to having those conversations.
Thank you very much. If selected as a representative, you'll find me coming and attending some of your board meetings. You'll find me personally sitting down and talking to you and learning from you, and also the mayors of all the towns. You'll see me as a liaison between what the community members, whether they are my patients and the family, or the health professionals or teachers, law enforcement and different walks of life. And I'll personally bring their concerns to you for some reason if they are not able to kind of voice and advocate for themselves. And you'll see me working across the aisle. I'm a networker. I connect with people because at the end of the day, I deal with human beings. And it's when they are suffering, that's when they come to me. I listen to some of the stories which none of you have heard because I sit in my office and listen to their tales, what are the challenges they face. And I'll bring some of those difficulties they face and help you solve the problem. I will never come to you with a problem if I can't think of an answer. I'll come with at least three different answers and ask you to consider. And that has been my style of management throughout because together, the 65,000 people are going to solve our county's problem. And that's the kind of liaison you'll see me. I'm a very compassionate person. I'm a good listener. I listen to not only the three of you, but also all the constituents. Once selected, there are going to be no more red, blue, independent, green. Everybody is going to be listened to. And that's the style that I have followed. I have friends, supporters who are from different parties, even outside the state. And I'll get the best ideas and give you some suggestions because at the end of the day, I'm not a politician. I'm a physician and I deal with human beings, I deal with three generations of people, and I understand the suffering. And that's the kind of person you'll find in me.
Michael?
Well, I'm going to firstly, I'm a little remiss because I've been to city council meetings, Salem and Omsville and Turner, but I have not been to the Marion County Commissioners' meetings. So I went to educate myself on what facing, what you guys are facing is current, both objectives and complications. What I really find out is though that the issues are really so diverse and stuff like that. And Marion County per se is a successful Republican entity here. The county level and stuff, the school boards and the positions, they have a very successful rate. So this county itself is quite strong. To me, the disconnect is back at the state level where we're outnumbered. And so I've been focusing only really on the state level. The county itself, if I can make any benefit at all to any citizen in this state, Marion County is also going to benefit.
All right, Commissioner Cameron, question eight.
Sure, as soon as I finish writing. Madam Chair. So Marion County is the number-one agricultural farm gate county in the state of Oregon, and it's our number-one industry. What strategies do you support to continue the protection of our farmland? Start with Dr. C.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, working in eastern Oregon kind of gave me the firsthand experience of what farm agriculture, rural America is. And those were the formative lessons as a person raising there, listening to the stories. So there is a disconnect between the rural Oregon and what we live in cities. And you won't find anybody else who can bridge the divide better than me because I live in eastern Oregon, Pendleton. I still serve Hani County, and I have many more supporters there. And that is one important lesson I've learned. The couple of things that we really have to keep in mind, we have to protect the land use for the farmers. We don't want that encroached. We have to protect the wine industry. So you'll see me connecting with that. The next important thing is connecting with the global market. I really think we need to find a way to help them connect with the global market. There is a lot of hunger for our food and the produce that we have. We have to collaborate with universities. We can't be satisfied with status quo unless we get this high-tech. When China can start agriculture in a desert, Gobi Desert, Israel can produce some of the best agriculture products in the middle of nowhere. We have God-given plenty of resources. There's no dearth of water, no dearth of soil, one of the most fertile part of the world I'm talking about. So why can't I connect this? I've seen hunger in other countries. Then we have to support small farm, medium-sized farm, flowers, horticulture, fish and, you know, animal and cattle industry, and reduce burden on the farmers. We are putting too much of rules, regulations, and thwarting their little business. Most of them are mom and pop, but we have to have some form of co-op to support them and thrive. We don't want the next generation leaving the farm and going away. That is not acceptable. If we end the food, I know what can happen to our country, and that is not acceptable. Thank you.
Michael?
Yes, agriculture, I'm going to reiterate a little bit, I guess. At a Senate Committee hearing, I listened one time to a spokeswoman for the dairy industry of Oregon. And she basically represented Tillamook, but this is an overall industry that even affects Marion County. She mentioned 1996, they had 1,200 dairies in the state of Oregon. Today, we have 106. That type of regulation is driving agricultural businesses out of existence. So I'm basically, like I said, I'm involved with a lot of the water rights, and agriculture has distinct water rights that need protected. We also have a lot of intrusion on our air qualities and stuff like that that can distinctly eventually affect especially the grass seed farmers and stuff like that. So we need to find out the compromise between clean air and putting people out of business. There has to be some kind of reasonable adjustments to that. I really am kind of, because of the meeting with the Omsville City Administrator, he was talking about urban growth boundaries and stuff, I don't like the encroachment of housing and especially trying to make affordable housing taking up really valuable farmlands. I think the farmlands are pretty critical. We need to address affordable housing without diminishing our farm percentage crops and stuff like that. So there is an area there that has to be investigated and properly adjusted, but farmlands are a critical asset. We can't lose them.
Thank you. Denise?
This is not a three-minute question, but I'll do my best. This is a pretty big issue in our community. And I'm just going to, you know, the agriculture community, including our nurseries, our farms, timber, they're battling on a lot of fronts. And this, I'll use this example with my husband, actually. He works for Oregon Cherry Growers. Well, it's no longer Oregon Cherry Growers. They've been here for 75 years and they are now part of a co-op out of Northern California. And he comes home and he, his job is in sales. And what Oregon sometimes forget is that you're competing on an international market. And so the more that we make Oregon the poster child for every extreme environmentalist legislation that comes through, the, you know, labor issues, regulating issues, I mean, there's just so many things, you know, pesticides, I mean, they're battling on so many levels that it drives the cost of doing business, drives the cost of the cherry. You can buy cherries out of Italy for less than you can buy cherries out of Oregon because of all the things that we're doing to make it difficult. So I mean, that is an example that is talked about on a very real level in my household. So I have great relationships with the farmers and the agriculture community, and I'll continue to have those. I know who to call and ask for input. My family actually comes from North Dakota where we were long laborers in agriculture and farms. So all my relatives back there, they're very outspoken as well, and they keep me up to date on what's important. So I appreciate the question and I would, like I said, this is a big question.
Thank you. And this is our last question, I believe, and it's a good one. So Commissioner Brentano?
It's going to get changed. Remember, you said we could elaborate?
You can elaborate.
So here's what happened. I asked for this question because it's a very important issue to me, and it was written wonderfully and neutrally. And I'll read that, but then I'm going to read the one I really want to ask, and you can respond how you want. The correct question is cap and trade as proposed legislation for the 2018 legislative session. What efforts will you make to ensure the specific needs of Marion County are met? And now my version. Cap and swindle as proposed legislation for the 2018-19 legislative sessions. What efforts will you make to see that this expensive, non-performing, manipulative, purely symbolic legislation is defeating? So let's get political.
So Michael gets to go first.
Michael? Am I first or Kim? How about distinctly oppose cap and trade?
Can you come forward?
Okay. I distinctly oppose the cap and trade. I do think it's just a big expenditure that's being pushed radically by the liberals. I noticed I received a letter from Senator Allen Olson where he described it very much in a nicer term than you just did, but they're very much opposed to this too. Marion County's industries, I'm not sure how many would really be affected by this because it is more of a air quality-type issue. And I would say if we need the word, use the word compromise, is to make sure that it's, the needs of the Marion County industries are not abused, is where I would stand.
Denise?
Well, cap and trade, first of all, I don't think is an issue should even be discussed and contemplated during a short session. This is a really big deal. And the short session originally was put into law due to dealing with, at least how it was sold, economic issues. And this is getting us into all kinds of other conversations. That being said, you know, air quality issues that you had mentioned, there are a lot of industries that are affected by that, and our agriculture is affected by this. I know that just the continued, again, continued cost, regulation, extreme levels of requirements that is going to, it will literally, it will put people out of business, and it will increase the cost of goods and services to all of us, especially within energy. So, you know, I support your position. I mean, you know, again, Commissioner Brentano tells how you really feel. It's very clear. So I think that going into this session, it will be the driving force of conversation. And I've already started having conversations with people in the community, with our business leaders, and with our farmers and such, of how we're going to battle. I think we just, we need to battle. This is not, this is a battle. And I'm concerned. I'm really concerned, quite honestly.
Thank you, Commissioner. The cap and swindle, as you nicely put it, you know, our government is very famous for picking up issues which are never an issue. It's like a drunk looking for the key under the lamppost when he lost it elsewhere because that's where the light is. It's a distraction for the following reason, because there are so many other pressing issues. So they just bring this up. It's a big distraction and it keeps us going and then end of the session. And the way it's written, nobody seems to think of the, what's the downstream effect? Is it really an issue or are there other priorities? This is a good example of how a runaway government, we are not thinking of the priority. We talk about cap and trade. Who are going to hurt? The farmers who are riding the truck or those giant harvesters that are doing the grasscutting. And that is really like killing the very purpose. My mother used to say, if the fence starts eating the crop, you don't need the fence. This is one such example where legislative fence will kill the crop for which it is designed. Now, does that mean that we should have a polluting vehicle running around the town and killing our kids? That's not what I'm suggesting. So we really need some amendments. We need to stand up and say, you know, let's talk about the most important priority without killing the very purpose for which you're trying to do. So that's really requiring not just conversations, but we're educating the people, helping them understand that while it may sound ideal, we have practical day-to-day things to do. I believe in changing oil value or driving your car. So we really have to start thinking in those kind of things. And this is how we, I would approach if I was selected by you all. Because this is not a priority the way it is framed. It sounds ideal, but nobody has thought through the downstream effect, and that is not acceptable by me. I'm not going to support anything that's, sorry.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our Commissioner questions. And we now have allotted three minutes each for a closing statement. And we will proceed alphabetically, and so we'll start with Denise Bowles.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm not going to speak probably very long. I just am going to state that I believe that my qualities, my experience, my relationships will give House District 19 an effective leader from day one. And my intention is not, is to be a leader in House District 19, but also within the legislature. And so I look forward to the opportunity to serve this community should you choose me today. And again, I want to reiterate just the access and the openness that my office will address our leaders, other legislators within the community or within the building, as well as community advocates and citizens. I think it's important that people have faith in their government again and that they have someone that is leading, that has a kind of integrity and character and advocacy, passionate advocacy, to stand up for them. I've been standing up for people my whole life. It's part of who I am and what I do. And I'm excited for the opportunity to take this to a new level and advocate for the people in House District 19. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me just call on you, Dr. Satya Chandragiri.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Give me that opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioners. 1996, I came to this country with a cashier's check of $300, one wife, one child, two suitcases. So many people have welcomed us. Dr. John Frye took us into his home in Temple University. And today, eastern Oregon, this helped us, it kind of helped us grow. And my career and who I am has been shaped by the grace of so many. It's with a lot of gratitude that we, I decided to say it's my time to roll up the sleeve and jump in. Yesterday, I had to take the toughest decision in my whole
Yesterday, I had to take the toughest decision in my whole career. I had to send an email announcing my resignation from the VA as of January 30th, because I planned to file on January 31st. I got 1,500 veterans I am taking care. It was a very heart-wrenching ethical decision. Because of the Hatch Act, I will not be able to file the paper. But I realized that this is the only way I can come up, address their voice. It is still difficult for me to come to terms, and I think of those 1,500, close to 1,500 veterans, and what will happen. They have been very kind. Some of them have said, it's okay, you go ahead. It's almost like getting deployed in order to be their voice. You know, we have been doing the same thing again and again. It seems like we use the same people, same issues, same template, and I'm not satisfied. I'm not a career politician, but I had to roll up my sleeve and come in, you know, because the people I've served, that 13-year-old child who came to my emergency room after trying to hang herself, and I cannot do this without stepping inside the legislature. And that has been my biggest reason why I decided. I would kindly ask you to consider my background, training, experience, and motivation, and what everybody has done. And we are filled with gratitude for what we have experienced in this country. My son was born in Philadelphia, and this is the America I want my son, my children, our children, our grandchildren, to grow up. And all hands on deck have to be involved in putting the humpty dumpty back together. We cannot keep doing the same thing again and again. There is no way any country in this planet can squander resources and watch the decimation of our system. When the big elephant starts dancing, everybody gets crushed, and that's not acceptable. That's not the right thing to do. And that is the reason I decided to put my name in the hat, and thank you very much for giving me so far. This itself is a big thing for me. Thank you.
Michael Hunter?
Yes. I'm bringing forward four years of good heavy legislative experience, been up there. I've been four years in the Oregon citizen's lobby, analyzing bills, rating bills, ranking bills, and also tracked the vote on the legislatures that are Republicans in our current legislature. And I am a full-time Republican. I don't jump the fence. I think that probably what I'm trying to do is correct the problem up there. I'm not content to just be in second place all the time. There is a route that I think I can get done. Can it be done overnight? No, again. I need to make sure I'm in the right position, and a legislative seat is the only place to be to do that. So I have a plan to correct things. Nobody else has offered anything except to do the same old rut. They're gonna be up there without the power that I think we should have as Republicans. The disconnect that earlier was mentioned between rural Oregon Republicans and the Willamette Valley Republicans can be amended if the rural Oregon starts seeing some light that they can actually have somebody helping them out. I think I can unite, start the process to unite Republicans statewide. So basically, I'm saying, I want to empower the voters. I want every voter in the whole state to have a good turnout during general elections, not special election scams, so that during the major turnouts, the voter can actually decide like cap and trade, or taxes, anything, and cap and trade is a tax. Anyway, I want the voter to have final say-so on that. Empower the voter. I want to empower the counties by each of them having a senator, and by them actually seeing a future. We will unite the Republican Party in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the first part of our meeting. Other than deliberation and vote, we have a break scheduled from 10:25 to 10:40. We have a few minutes. I just, first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for your responses. You all did a fabulous job. It is not easy being in the hot seat, as Commissioner Cameron can attest, and you did a magnificent job. You really did. And I think we're just blessed to have three very well-qualified candidates that were brought forward to us. So again, thank you for being here. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you for the excellent job that you did this morning. And if there's anything that my fellow Commissioners would like to add to that before we take a break?
Not this time for me.
Okay. Anything you'd like to say?
I just said, do we need to wait till 10:40?
No, we can take a break right now. I'm just wondering, because we noticed that we were gonna deliberate at 10:40, can we start earlier under the process? I'm looking at the back row.
And Bruce.
It's not a public hearing.
Right, it's not, but at the same time, I just don't know.
My only concern, Madam Chair, is that it was noticed as a passion item for 10:40.
Exactly, that's my concern, too. So I think we will break till 10:40, just to be on the safe side. So we have a little bit of extra time for break, and we will convene back here for deliberation and vote at 10:40. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for staying around for the remainder of our meeting. And I'm not, I was gonna ask Bruce. What we had discussed in the break is that generally, we don't vote as a motion, like we just express individually our vote, and it's weighted based on Secretary of State's, probably even, Stephen, right?
Right, it's one by one.
One by one, right, okay. So I, we haven't really talked about how we want to do this, but I'm thinking maybe each Commissioner would like to sort of make comments and kind of reflect and maybe express their direction, and then we could go through the formal process of voting once we've made our comments. So we'll take our first Vice Chair first, because you are so important. And then we'll go to our second Vice Chair, who is also important, right, yes. And then I'll wrap it up.
So for those that don't know the inside joke, last year I became the, what?
You were the second Vice Chair.
Second Vice Chair, and I stated how powerful the second Vice Chair is, because when they're in charge, there's not two of us here, so they really can't do anything anyway. So it's a position of no authority or anything.
You can sign plots.
So this year, you are, and I'm not, so. We have so much fun.
So show us what you've learned.
We have so much fun. No, I just wanna go back to the focus of the moment, that we're here, and all three of you, thank you very much for what you have done in your lives, what you talked about that you've done in our communities, in our state. It's just great to have people who are so involved, passionate, and willing to step up and serve. As someone who has sat in your chair twice, I was appointed to House District 19 back in 2005, but two of the Commissioners are still here that did that, while you're still here. And it was, it was a time where my hands were a little bit sweaty and a little bit nervous, and, but I wanna just say thank you for what you've done. And going over to that building is a pretty, how do I say that? I remember the day I got sworn in. It's a pretty honorable thing, and you never think, wow, how did I get here? So we really appreciate what you are going through and know the feeling, what you're going through. And I also want to continue to encourage you to stay plugged in, no matter what the result of this is. And I mentioned that Councilor Nanki is here, Representative Bill Post is sitting back there, there's a lot of staff that's sitting in the room, and people on Facebook Live are watching this process, and I know that they care, and that they want to be involved, and they want you to be involved, too. So no matter what happens here today, I wanna encourage you to continue to do that. Obviously, I, you want me to, you want me to save my vote now, or you want me to wait until we all turn our cards over at the same time, Madam Chair?
There's no pre-designed format, so it depends on-
Go ahead, that's what I'd like to hear.
Okay, Commissioner Brentano would like you to say what, who you're-
So, so my vote is for Denise Bowles.
Well, I certainly could echo Commissioner Cameron's thoughts, and thanks for being here and taking this interest. I'll start with you, Michael. Kindred spirit on natural resources. We can't lock 'em up and then wonder why we don't have success in Oregon, and I've been trying to do that for a long time, wise use. And I certainly agree with you that I'd like to see a stronger Republican Party and not be dominated by liberals out of Portland. Kills me. We have that in common. Satya, mental health is a big issue. Involvement in my family, a mother, a granddaughter, I know how important it is, and I know, I can hear your compassion and how hard you worked to do it. It isn't your only issue, but it does show as just kind of being the main one, and it is on veterans, too. Both important issues, but I just say it my way. And what I'm looking for, too narrow, in terms of all the issues facing Marion County and the state of Oregon. I know you could do the job, but I was just looking for something broader. And Denise, and I should say, all of you answered the one question that I really cared about correctly, so you passed on that one. We made this decision and appointed you some years ago, and I commented when we began that every appointment I've made, I've been happy with, and you did a good job then, and I know you can do a good job in the future. Even since being here on the, in the legislature, she has come back, mentioned it, serving on the Budget Committee with Marion County. One, where I get a chance to really know you, but also where I know that you know what's important to Marion County, and that's invaluable in having that access to that knowledge in the legislature. So my decision will be for Denise Bowles.
Thank you. So as I mentioned at the closing of the closing statements, that you all did an excellent job, and I'm so pleased that the Republican Central Committee sent us three such strong nominees. I'll start with Michael. I think you're, Michael Hunter, your principles are very strong, you can see that. You have great experience, particularly with rural issues. As you mentioned, you've been a citizen lobbyist, you have experience in the building. You did say that you've primarily focused on the state level and not so much on the local level, and you did start talking about some of the meetings that you've been attending more recently. I would encourage you to get more experience at that local level and connect with those local constituencies, because in the end, all politics is local, as they say, and in order to become elected to a position, you have to have those connections with people. And I'm gonna elaborate on that and a little bit more when I talk about Dr., I'm gonna say the whole name, Chandragiri. Am I saying that right? All right, thank you. So thank you also for stepping forward, and I would encourage you to continue the work that you're doing in, at the political level. Dr. C., you got, we received many, many letters on your behalf, glowing letters, talking of people with relationships with you that talk about your work ethic and your integrity and the passion that you have, and the many, many things that you have done to support people in communities in Oregon. You have certainly a very deep knowledge of mental health, and Gina Nichol wrote a letter, I've known Gina for many, many years, and talked about that having you in the legislature would promote someone who has that knowledge of mental health. But you also expressed today a breadth of knowledge in other things, education, agriculture, economic development. I was impressed, very impressed with the answers, and your opening statement was powerful. I just have to say that, it was very, very well done. I think the piece that you're going to, that you're lacking and that you're going to need to work on is, again, those local constituencies. When I ran for state representative as an unknown person in 2000, and I actually started in 1999, so getting a late start, no one knew who I was. The Republican Party was going out and recruiting someone to run against me in the primary, because they said they wanted the seat. And I wa, well, and it was Kevin Mannix, I'll have to say, that actually went on my behalf to the leadership and said, don't look any farther than Janet Carlson. She'll, she's a hard worker and she'll do the job. But nobody believed it at the time.
Oh, I do now.
But I walked 12,875 doors, all right, and met people at their doorstep, talked with people, along with all of the neighborhood meetings and the other meetings that we've talked about today. But it really is on the doorsteps where I heard people's concerns, talked with them, got a sense of what House District 19 was. And I think that that is where Denise, moving to you, actually excels, because she not only has the experience working in the building for many years and has those relationships which you talked about, has served in the position already, so has a taste from those months that you were in there about what it was like, and did speak to that at the Central Committee meeting. But you also, and I have to say, you undersell yourself, Denise. You need to, you need to be stronger about who you are, because you have so much experience and so much to give. I don't know that it came out as much, just because I know you and I know what you have done, but I'm, how many years did you work for Kevin? Six years, eight? It was nine years? Yeah, long time. So you did that constituency work that I talked about, day in and day out, while you were in the building during session, during those interim periods. You know the people of House District 19. You worked on campaigns for House District 19. You know what that looks like. You've connected with Jody throughout the time that she's been on there and kept up to speed on what's going on. You know the lobby system, you know the political system. I mean, running for office isn't just about principles and policy, as much as in a theoretical world we would love it to be, it's also about the politics and how people get elected and how they stay elected, and you know all of those aspects, inside and out. Been the Chair of the Republican Central Committee, right? It's important, that's an important thing. You know, you've worked at the grassroots level for many, many years, and you have demonstrated your strength in sticking to your principles, and yet being able to find, as you talked about, that common ground so that you can get things done, because it's tough getting things done in the building, as I think people perhaps sitting in this room can attest, particularly when you're in the minority party. So for as much as I think our other two nominees bring wonderful strengths, my vote is going to be for you, Denise, and your ability to be able to represent House District 19, represent us as Marion County in your work in House District 19. But I do want to, again, thank everyone for their presentations today and for their commitment to this work. So we have had three statements. We've actually expressed who we're voting for. I don't know that we need to do that again formally. Bruce, do we-
Sign the papers.
You need to sign. You can, you can address it more formally, but I think you've accomplished it already.
All right. So Christie is going to write in, you've already written in the names, right? And then we will sign the papers, and then after that, is there anything else fellow Commissioners would like to say?
Congratulations.
All right. Good, okay.
Thank you.
Let's see, I think this one, right, we sign there. Right, and she's, good, so. So we have a board order that we're signing that has a number of wheres that describes why we're here today. Position's vacant due to the resignation of State Representative Jody Hack. Here's what the law says on how we fill the vacancy, and then finally, it says the board finds that Denise Bowles is qualified to hold office as an elector of House District 19, is willing to serve as a state representative for House District 19. Now therefore, it's hereby ordered that Denise Bowles is appointed to fill the vacancy in the Office of State Representative, House District 19, to perform the duties of the office until the term of the office expires. And it will be forwarded to the Secretary of State.
And when does session start?
February 5th.
Is it next week?
February 5th.
Week from Monday, then, right? All right.
I'm thankful that it's somebody else and not me going in there on February 5th.
Yes. Okay, so that concludes our business for today. We thank everyone for coming, and those that have been watching on Facebook Live and on CCTV, and again, a very important event, and congratulations to our, all of our nominees, and also to Representative Denise Bowles. And with that, we will adjourn.